Anderson.
Here.
DeBorak.
Here.
First item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I'd take a motion. Second, roll call.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is public comments. It's time and place for comments on any item other than those that are on a public hearing. Anybody in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda, take a motion. Motion approved, consent agenda as stated. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is new business. Under new business, action item one, East Vista Lake Extension Project. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the East Vista Lake Avenue Extension Project. Ask the clerk when the notice was published.
September 8th.
Have been any written comments for or against the project?
No, sir.
This time I'd like staff to provide their report.
Very quickly, Mayor, this extends Vista Lake to the east 490 feet, give or take. Bids will receive Thursday. A bid tab is in front of you that you'll be looking at here momentarily. It's not often we hit a home run, but on this one, I think we hit a home run with the bid prices that we thought we were going to see and the bids that came in. Very favorable to the city in a tune of about $100,000 in round numbers.
Anything else on your end? Anyone present who wishes to be heard for against the proposed project? Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So move.
Second, roll call.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is consider motion to receive and file bids. Take a motion.
So move.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Next item, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-102, making award of construction contract. Any comments to this? Kathleen?
Yeah, we're recommending the contract be awarded below bidder Vanderpool Construction of Indianola in the amount of $336,468.
Randy, do you have any comments for Vanderpool Construction?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Do we have any prior?
Snyder Associates has word of that.
You have, okay.
And other communities on both development projects, which in a way this is very similar to a development project because it's in a cornfield as opposed to in everybody's front yards, but we've also worked on just St. Street reconstruction projects too, and they had very good luck with that.
Yeah, just curious. Figured you'd add it that way. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Take a motion?
So move.
Sarchet?
Take your choice. Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Next item, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-103, approving contract and bond. Take a motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. It's a big step towards some improvements out there. Looking forward to seeing that opportunity. Item two, consider motion of authorize Snyder and Associates engineering agreement in the amount of $22,300 to provide engineering services related to preparing of construction documents and provision of bid phase and construction phase services for the 2017 Park Improvement Project Phase One. Mr. West, you want to speak to this?
Yes. Tim West, Snyder and Associates. We've been working with the park staff on developing some Phase One improvements for the Hope City Dog Park, which is located kind of in the center of town. 12 Oaks Park, which is kind of the pond area that's kind of a remnant over on the north side there. And then Broadway Street, the Lost Lake, which is also kind of a triangular piece located along Broadway there that we're looking at a future playground out there. Right now, we're working with kind of set budget, so we're looking at a series of Phase One improvements that are similar at all three parks. So it would be utility improvements and sidewalks and trail work that's associated with that, a little bit of grading in order to make way for some larger projects in the future. We're also looking at establishing the shelter in 12 Oaks Park. That would be a part of that project as well. The Dog Park would have most of the improvements all completed in this Phase One, so that would include the fence and some of the drop waste receptacles and some of the different types of plaza and gate systems that would be required for the Dog Park. We have goals on the front of you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Randy, did you have anything to add from your end? Because I know you've been working on this a long time.
Mike and I were talking before he left on vacation if the council would consider maybe combining Phase One and Phase Two. Other than that would finish Dog Park, that would finish Lost Lake, and the only thing that wouldn't finish would be 12 Oaks. The pond is going to be, call it Phase Two, call it Phase Three. We're just going to come to a stopping point past that shelter house, kind of stop there and then regroup and see what we would like to do with that pond, whether it be rip wrap on the shoreline or mow to the shoreline or possibly dredge it out for fishing, maybe even add some parking back in there somewhere, so.
So is this because most of this Phase One work will start in the spring, right?
Correct.
So if we go into next fiscal year, we start, get the planning for Phase One done?
Correct.
Keep going into the next budget year? Do we have any rough figures as to? I think we're a little bit good or under budget for what we had allocated for this first Phase One, so.
Yes.
But I'm assuming that Phase Two will require more than what the difference is?
The biggest chunk on Phase Two would be the actual playground and the cement pad for Lost Lake.
But adding the addition of Phase Two at this point wouldn't change what we're putting on Snyder tonight?
No.
Okay.
And another thing on Lost Lake, my biggest fear is getting all the bike trails and sidewalks in now and then trying to get concrete trucks in there to pour that pad for the playground. I think it's too far for a pumper truck, and we're probably going to do some damage with concrete trucks coming in. But if we have to adjust, we can adjust to, so.
If I might, the intent here is if council wants to finish with Phase Two, we can get the documents ready so we go ahead to bid this. And in next year's budget, we again put the money to finish off these parks. And I have heard council say that that is a priority, is finish these parks off. So there is an earmark this year for these parks out of the budget, and if we can do the same for next year, I think we can get most of these done.
So my preference would be to do that, given that we stay where we are from a revenue standpoint. I don't know that we can say that for sure with some of the, specifically the Local Sales Act vote in November for Dallas County and how that would affect if approved, one in Polk County coming, I think, very soon after that. However, I do think that this commitment is a first step and not a complete journey or however you want to call it. And I think this is important stuff. We're covering a large swath of the town from, as you mentioned, center to the east and to the west with Lost Lake. So I think this is a big step, money well spent. I would be in favor of going ahead with Phase Two. I mean, I think we get this approved regardless, but appreciate the work that you guys have done, Randy. Obviously, we kind of beat up on our own for bringing the issue up last week, but make sure that the Parks Commission is on board with some of the questions that they had around, most specifically, I think, toddler playground equipment. I know we're not there yet, but just make sure that they're involved and supportive. You guys drive in this because I think you guys are the most equipped to see this through in the best fashion, but.
And Becky actually had provided, we had three different options on playgrounds, and I think the Parks Board has that in their hands right now.
Okay, great. Good job.
Again, they need notes, just a recommendation. It's what their thoughts are, but it's certainly not always set in stone. I mean, the goal is to make recommendations and think this through a little bit more from the user and their kid, if kids in the neighborhood, those types of things, we may not have access to. But I agree with Ralph that we may talk about this for a long time, the growth and how we need to develop the parks, and at least this will allow that process to start and then we can build upon it.
Becky, this is just starting the process.
Absolutely.
Lots of conversation to come.
Could you go over that 12 Oaks again, what you mentioned, to make sure I understood what you just said?
Yeah, part of Phase One in 12 Oaks was bringing in a bike trail off of 12 Oaks Drive and coming in and just kind of coming up to the pond, turning to the north a little bit, and that's where the shelter is going to be. And then from that point, we were probably going to stop. We still need to get some depths on that pond just to see actually how deep it is. And there is some issues around the pond where we may have to dredge, we may have to repair some shoreline and just, you know, we're going to be adding irrigation. There'll probably be a couple of fountains there, maybe some lights, but that's all input from the Parks Board yet, so.
Well, I'm trying to understand where you're at on that, though. So if we were to vote for this tonight, that would just be a wait-and-see type thing?
That one is going to require a little bit more.
I would, yeah, I guess that one was done before and these other two places were done. Parks Board, City, everybody has had more than adequate enough time to handle this, and it's been a disaster for those residents down there. So I would not be in favor of moving forward on any until we get that together.
I think, Richard, if I may.
It's too little, too late. We've heard excuses after excuses after excuses. And if we have a weed ordinance for the rest of town, we should have a weed ordinance for ourselves, as long as we're going to keep taking land from people, which is what we're doing, is basically eminent domain.
What I think Randy is saying is that's Phase One. We don't exactly know how Phase Two is going to fit and what the exact prices are, but we can get Phase One completed. It's what, so what he was doing is he was giving you the dividing line between Phase One and Phase Two.
Right, but I think I also heard him say that he doesn't know if we're going to rip wrap or mow or redo anything. And it still looks like hell after taking it from people a couple of years ago.
Believe me, it's going to look nice.
I wish I could believe that. I haven't seen anything to lead me to believe that it will, so.
Who did we take it from?
Well, the developer. We didn't know that.
Well, as I remember, he couldn't wait to give us a pond.
Well, sure, if he has to give up lands. Kind of like when I put the city in front of my yard, Ron, I never had to give up my backyard.
I need a motion to move forward on number two to get this project at least started.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
No.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. Item three, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-99, accepting public improvements for Lost Lake's platform. Kathleen?
I guess, this is just a kind of cleanup item. The developer was delayed with completing the public improvements primarily because of the trail connection to the Nelsmith Trail. All that work's been done. The seating's been taken care of that was adjacent to that trail, so now it's just a cleanup item to accept those public improvements and allow that check to be returned to the developer.
Questions? Motion?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-101, approving an amended site plan for Luana Savings Bank.
Can we, sorry?
What?
Back to the trail access. Randy, you know, is that, that trail access from Cardinal to the trail, is that durable enough to be driven on?
Yeah, it'll be able to handle truck traffic, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't, just, there's a lot of construction vehicles over there, and I think they were using this, and I just thought of it as we were wrapping up there, sorry. For, I don't know if that's a patrol issue, if it's fine, just bringing it up isn't that bad. That's a really nice connection, and I don't want it to get.
Item four, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-101, approving amended site plan for Luana Savings Bank.
Thank you, Mayor. Council will recall that at the last council meeting, a site plan was approved for Luana Bank whereby there was an agreement that was reached in that room between two property owners for the access of Lot Two of Edgewater Point, Plat Three. Since that time, the two parties have come together, as is evidenced in your agenda packet, and have come up with a new alignment that is to the north and goes directly from Tyler Street to Lot Two, Bridge Point, Plat Three. And both parties have agreed to this new alignment. They lose six parking stalls, however, their parking stalls still meet the minimum requirement and then some for this location in this site plan.
And to add to that, I just want to thank the parties involved, staff, and both parties with Luana, as well as Mr. Bowlen. There's been a lot of work spent on this between a lot of us in the last couple of weeks to come up with what I think is a very good solution, and I appreciate all the parties talking and working this thing out.
With that being said, I take any questions or a motion?
To avoid the potential of them changing their mind again, I will make a motion to approve resolution 2017-101.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. I think you'll see some action up there soon. Item five, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-100, approving change order number one for the police station remodel of a net decrease amount of negative $22,683. I assume you'll all fall over yourself to make this motion.
So move.
Second. You have somebody say something.
I was waiting, my God. Anybody want to comment to the negative $22,000? Out of your salary? Okay.
You want to add it to my salary?
No. Just adjustment, any comment to it?
This is credit back to the city.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just, there was a contingency fee in there, and Gary did try to speak to it, but it just wasn't necessary.
Yep, that's all I wanted to make comment to.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, consider motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2017-900, stop, yield, and no parking. Who's commenting to this? There's a whole bunch of them on there.
This is getting everything ready in the original part of town for the street openings that will be happening in the relatively near future on Deer Haven. Each one of these roads, we are now restricting no parking to the least egregious side of that street in the original part of town and setting up the appropriate stop signs as required so these items can all be ordered and installed when this is accepted.
So to me, this is sort of a little recall on some excellent progress, if, maybe not, but could we just go the extra mile with the communication? We've got a lot of people that have been living down there for a long time that have not had these type of restrictions, and hopefully they'll understand as the area to the east gets connected there, and I'm very excited about that for everybody involved, but just how, what that is exactly of, you know, a letter of something, but just to try and.
There has been some one-on-one meetings that Mike has had with those that it would have a dramatic effect on. We try to limit those to just a few, but we can definitely get a letter out. And we fully expect council will see three ratings on this, which also helps get the information out.
Can I say something quick as well? When, at the end of the streets, when we started, when they started building the connections to them, Gary and I worked together and made up a flyer that we put on people's cars too because that seemed to be the biggest area of confusion with the apartment building and on over. And then also as far as the police department goes, once the new parking, no parking goes into effect, for the first three days, we will either go knock on the door if the car belongs to the house and just advise them of it, or it'll just be a warning. We need parking tickets issued right away and like that either. Just give people a grace period to kind of adjust to the new signage as well.
Okay, and that was preemptive on my part. It wasn't an idea on what you've done.
No, no.
You've got it covered. I just want to be very methodical with.
Well, we're just going to miss one.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, it sounds like you guys got it covered. I just, I worry that roads have been like that for, what, how long run? Thirty, forty years?
Hundred twenty-five. I don't remember that, but yeah, it's not longer than I remember fifty years ago. Yeah, I agree with you. I think the more communication we can do, the better off we are.
Yep.
There'll be some.
They had to take down the hitch and post stand anyway.
All right, are you making a motion?
I will. I'm making a motion to approve resolution 2017-900.
I will second it. And can I add to that with the fact that we're going to communicate with citizens down there and let them know what's taking place?
Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yep.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries. And to further that, there is two more readings. So if anybody has questions or more than welcome to attend the council meeting in the next month. Number seven, K-9 Committee, item A, presentation of committee's findings. Chief.
A while back, we asked the mayor to appoint a committee to research, possibly having a K-9 committee here with the Hope City Police Department, serve the City of Hope City. We formed that committee and began its research, did some educational meetings. We've had, I think, seven meetings counting meetings with different people on the committee because of individuals varying schedules. I don't want to make this too long. The quick overview, I believe a K-9 program has benefited the city greatly. I, all the departments I've worked at throughout my career have had a K-9 unit on the street, and in every single community, they have been a great benefit. Most of the communities, there was, dog after dog has gone retired, the community would come out in force to donate and to always their support to get a new dog out on the street right away. It's a great clean outreach tool and it's a great deterrent for criminals that want to come through our city when word on the street is that you have a K-9. When I was at City Windsor Heights, when we got our K-9 program, we would listen to jail phone calls of people we arrested working drug cases, and they would tell their friends that were calling them, "I can't believe you went to Windsor Heights to do that or to do this because you should have known you'd have been caught there." And they would reference our K-9 officer quite a bit in those as being very effective. So those, and the overview, it's great outreach at the school. The drug dogs aren't the main reason I wanted for it. It's a really good force multiplier for patrol, can look for lost children, individuals that will walk away from a care facility such as we have here in town. They have excellent tracking abilities. So that's the short overview of why I believe it would be a large benefit to us. Kind of gave an overview of the meetings, and we've all met at different points of times throughout the committee. Tonight, two of the citizens from Hope City that are on the committee are here and they're just going to speak real quickly as to what they kind of learned and what their impressions were from the committee meetings. And then I'll give the other committee members who are here a chance to talk if they would like to as well. So with that, I'll have Alyssa Kuner step up.
Alyssa Kuner, introduce myself. I've been a citizen of Hope City for about six years. My husband and I have three children, three and a five-year-old, three-year-old, and a six-week-old. And I'm also the current president of the Hope City Women here in Hope City, and I'm now a member of the K-9 Education Committee. Why am I passionate about having the K-9 in our community? I believe number one is for our safety, having a K-9 to track children that wander away made from elementary school, the Bay Creek area, and also made from the nursing home. My second point is protection of our officers. I believe a criminal would probably think twice to threaten one of our officers if there was an angry barking dog and left in the park that could be let out any moment. So I feel like the safety for officers, especially during the night shift, would be beneficial. Number three, I believe it would keep a handful of the drugs out of our community, like Chief said, in Windsor Heights, that was a situation for people to kind of stay out of the area. And I feel like that would be something that they would talk about and say, "There's K-9 in the Hope City area," because if there was any type of a traffic stop, having the K-9 out with the officer, if there's any type of smell of drugs or they could sense that there's any type of drugs, that could obviously go to an arrest of that person. And number four, I would say the tracking of criminals in buildings or even the ones that are on foot throughout the community and through the neighborhoods that they would be able to help, I would say quicker than even an officer that was on foot running after those. And then number five, I would say this would be good made for the school, for the community to kind of bridge us together. I feel like that would be a good thing. I know there's a lot of citizens in town that I've already talked to regarding this and seeing, I'm trying to get feedback and a feel for this, and they said that it would be great to learn more information and really embrace that K-9, using it at different functions at the library to introduce it maybe for just education-wise so that our children would be a little bit more knowledgeable. A K-9 is not just here to, you know, not just for drugs. I mean, there's a lot of resources, finding people, and just doing some positive things for our community also. So personally, I support the purchase and the funding for the K-9 to be placed here in Hope City. I also tell you that I've had this topic on my agenda for Hope City Women for several months now. That's a group of about 50 people, 50 women of all ages, and they're very excited, and they've always asked, "Well, what's happening at the next meeting and what can we do to get this started?" And it's been for a couple of months, so I'm really excited in a couple of weeks to kind of hear where we are with this. But thanks for your time, and I think you should be very proud of Chief and Officer Iker. They've been doing a ton of work and research and bringing it to the meetings to help us learn a lot about this and also giving us the tools to kind of go out and research ourselves to be more knowledgeable about it, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Josh McLean. I'll speak as well. Good evening, Josh McLean, 113 Main Drive, moved to Hope City in 2012, so relatively new residents of the city. I bring a little different perspective to the idea of bringing a K-9 to the city, more of a personal experience. First of all, I'd ask, but thank you, Tracy, for bringing me on the board and some of the discussions we've had with residents and then the statistics that we've learned with Iker, that he brought your attention. Hopefully, those of you who've been brought to your attention, the benefits of bringing a dog to a city, not only the same things that you pointed out as far as keeping drugs out of a community, but just the presence that a dog brings when somebody sees that truck that says K-9 on the back of it, instantly sticks out to you that there's a dog in that
that there's a dog in that community and, uh, just like she said, the force multiplier that a dog is and the enhanced senses that we as humans don't capability have that a dog can bring. Um, as far as my personal experience, uh, I bring more of a military side to it and the benefits that it brought during my tours in Iraq and Afghanistan, uh, and also the reassurances that when we went on a patrol, uh, through a community, now granted, their threats over there are much more significant than the threats we face here in Polk City. Uh, however, just the benefits the dog brings, uh, knowing when you're walking down a community, uh, the threats weren't nearly there as often. They would stay away knowing that that dog is with us. They weren't as readily to detonate an IED or to a place, uh, some kind of threat in the area, knowing that we were going to be coming through with the dog. And so it deterred even those kind of terrorists and things like that overseas. Um, and so if it can have that kind of effect on the threat level that they would face over there in a war-torn country, uh, imagine the effect it would have with any kind of threats that we would face here in Polk City. And just as Ms. Koner said, uh, dogs are also a very positive effect, you know, especially with senior citizens and things like that, to a community, uh, when you bring a dog out, people want to be with the dog, they want to, you know, be around the dog, it, it's a very positive impact they have. So I think with all those things coming together, that the, uh, the enhanced capabilities the dog has and the positive effect of the community, I think it would be a very beneficial asset to have on the police force, and so, thank you for your time.
Josh.
Real quick, I would just offer any of the other committee members, uh, that were on the committee, a couple of words, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I was only able to make a couple of the meetings, but, um, it was obvious that you and Officer Iker did a really, really good job of, uh, looking at the costs, the benefits, um, and the passion brought to the table certainly. I think there's, there's no question, the safety, the safety piece of this is, uh, we can talk safety all day, but when you talk about, uh, the amount of cars and the diversity of people we have coming through here during the summers, uh, going to Big Creek and just, you know, going, going through period, I think that will, that deterrent will certainly be, uh, it'll be, well, you may not be able to notice it, but that's what we need. We want to make sure that we don't have those, those types of folks coming through. And it, and it mentions in the memo that you believe the first, uh, the startup cost could be something that maybe Polk City Women, we could reach out to some other groups as well to, to get, to help eat that, that first initial cost. Not saying that's going to happen, but I assume you've done a little bit of homework in...
Yes, that, that's our goal, and I'm very positive that, that I have a sliding scale of how we can implement the program. Uh, numbers, I have to know, would be an ideal goal. I'm willing to work with whatever I'm allowed to do as we go forward with the program, but the annual costs that are in that packet in the memo, or as accurate as I can get, I pulled departments all around the metro area that have K-9 programs, and then try to interpret them and then fit them into, uh, our day-to-day operations. It's, it's an estimate, but I believe it's very accurate. But that, that startup cost, I have different plans throughout, um, where we can, you know, utilize an older car we have here to start us, we need to get the program up and running, and then, you know, seek down the road, move it up to a newer vehicle a couple of years down the road or whatever we needed to do to get it started, but it's, um, I, I, in my experience, and it's been all been in communities the size or smaller, the community has come out and forced a financial support of K-9 program, so I'm optimistic about that.
Yep, so I mean, I a hundred percent support the, the process and the program, uh, just for that fact, and I guess my last comment would be, I don't remember hearing about with this, the partnership with the school, is there any, has there been any talks with the high school or, uh, you know, kind of working with the district a little bit on, on utilizing a K-9 program?
Yep, we've, uh, we, we're already forming a very strong partnership with Polk County Sheriff's Department, they have a, the SRO full-time at the school. Officer Lambert's been assigned by her department, meets weekly, uh, with her, goes to the school and has those meetings and interacts with the Polk City, um, youth that are going to school up there, and it would be a big part of our partnership with them. And that would obviously get to the school district about how the K-9 was utilized, but it would, it would always be an option for them to call on us for its use whenever needed.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Castle Mordini?
Yeah, I had a little bit different perspective as well. In my previous life, I was a K-9 officer for several years. Um, so I, I've seen firsthand how beneficial they can be. Um, I'm convinced that there's, there's not any better community outreach, uh, tool for a city, PD or not. As a matter of fact, a lot of my job, when you weren't on the road, was constantly going to different organizations because it was so popular, and I know all the other handlers said the same thing. Um, having said that, there's an awful lot of other good things that you can do with these K-9s and, uh, you know, obviously, everybody knows the world we live in now and nobody's ever held accountable by our courts, and consequently, people become more brazen and, and those are officers in a lot of greater risk. Uh, and from a safety perspective, as I've mentioned to some people before, I was always amazed that you could have a whole squad of guys out there with guns and crippled want to come out, but as soon as they heard that dog bark, they were all handcuffing themselves. Uh, so from an officer's safety standpoint, they're great, from a drug standpoint, they're great, we have a huge drug problem in our school. That would be a benefit, um, even though it's, I know it's not Polk City proper, but it's part of the community, uh, officer's standpoint, uh, safety-wise and community outreach, all those reasons, and then some, you know, I'd be for it. I know there is a cost that goes with that, but I think the benefits far outweigh the cost.
And today's claimant, just to piggyback what you said about the community outreach, it is just such a great tool. I can't, he just said it as well, I can't say enough about the, you know, the benefit of, of all different groups, not just with young people with cooners and with any civic organization. I mean, we would be very proactive in getting out there and doing demonstrations and, and education and working, um, our community outreach with the public that way as well.
And I, and I know people hear it all the time and you, you know, you're not necessarily in a media outlet because that plays to a different agenda, but in real life, um, the difference between twenty years ago and now from a law enforcement perspective, and I'm saying this so they don't have to because they probably don't want to get into that, is day and night deference from the time I started my career till I ended it. Uh, it, it's just out of control, and so anything we can do to, I'm a firm believer, anything you can do to help with the safety of those that protect you is well within.
Tracy, you got anything to add?
Um, I think from a financial standpoint, I think it's great that Trace is wanting to get the community involved and gather and donations for, um, eighty or ninety percent of the costs involved. So with the $5,800, that would just be within his PD budget, and, um, that would be something that you would want to see if you want to increase the budget for ongoing costs, but I think, um, for a donation standpoint, I think it's great.
Yeah, I'll start here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thanks. Some of that, I know we're talking finances and stuff like that, but I think, um, as far as getting food and stuff, all that donating, I think there's, uh, partners out there that we can work with, whether it be Fairway, Walmart, I know Walmart's big in Windsor Heights. Um, we haven't yet reached out to local veterinarians, um, however, uh, kind of what I've heard from Doc from the media that he might be interested. Um, again, and hasn't been discussed because they want to, you know, not put the cart before the horse. So again, I think we can cover a lot of those. I know, uh, I read in the man's fifty, the $100. I would like to, you know, be able to get a lot of that donated so it wouldn't be a tax burden, and again, I know, everybody has to, to the community, I have not heard one thing, not even one concern, um, they're just like, "How can we help?" So I think that's going to be a, a, a big push from the community as far as us goes, and I think we got a lot of support out there, so we appreciate, uh, council's support from you guys as well, so.
And the annual number I came up with, as I said earlier, was based on my research, and it, it does not take into account, uh, the possibility of getting services donated from a veterinarian or food donated, and I can say, every other community I've worked in, I don't believe the police department ever paid for vet care or food. It was like a, a large vet, but like we had our dog in Windsor Heights, and we broke its tooth, the city ended up paying for that, but like general vet care and day-to-day maintenance was almost always covered through donated, um, time and money. I'll, I'll wrap it up and then answer any questions anybody might have. Basically, the number that, that you have before you, the, um, in your memo would be the annual ongoing costs, uh, to support the K-9 program. What I'm asking tonight, um, is, we didn't want like, Matt, so we got to the horse, I didn't want to start reaching out for donations or reaching out for services, but we ran it by the city council and got your input, and I'm, I'm asking if, if we were able to raise enough money to get the program started, purchase the dog, to get a car ready, to, uh, pay for the officer and the selected for the position's initial training, would the city council support a line item of that amount annually to maintain the program? Is there any questions?
I agree with everything that's been said. I, I think it's a great idea, and maybe I don't need to be in, involved in a nuts-and-bulls of it, but we know where the dog's going to live.
They stay with the handler twenty-four-seven.
Pardon?
Heard you had room in your...
My dog's getting old. And that's another thing I want to say, who doesn't like dogs? So, uh, and would, you can, there's a dog that will sniff drugs, find people, and, and sniff explosive, one dog can do all of that?
Not explosives, no. Explosives is a different training set, um, and the, the use that we would have for that. So basically, you picked your priorities with the animal based on your community. Uh, it's like Des Moines Police Department has two bomb-sipping dogs on their current parrot's immune, and we have a Metro Star 2080 agreement with them. So if we would have an, an event where we would need an explosive-sipping dog, we would have on our disposal, it's much more, my main purpose for the dog is a patrol animal, and that is handler protection, and then sniffing would be building searches. So in the middle of night, for options called an open doorway in a business, that officer not going to buy themselves, risking their safety and then encountering a potential burglar in the middle of night while searching a business or an open house, they can send the, the dog in, uh, and they obviously have warning there, and they don't get too much procedural things, so you don't actually, you know, they send the dog in to search a building of the business owners and they're picking up something late at night. But those are my main things. The narcotics detection is a, is a very, and yes, they can do that as well as a patrol dog, it's a very good ancillary benefit. Um, I just, other cities that I've been in, not cities I've worked in, but other cities I've known, uh, when I was managing the K-9 program, they relied on, they wanted that drug dog to find money and seize money, and that's why I say the, the drug detection's an ancillary benefit. I just don't want that to, people think that's our primary reason, because there has been other cities, other city officials in the past, that they get locked on thinking that dog is going to be a moneymaker for the city, and they can find, you know, drug money along with drugs. Uh, so, but yes, the animal, uh, to answer your question, would be able to do all of that, about the explosive detection in addition to that. They're a very specifically trained dog for explosive detection. Yes, sir.
Um, I agree with everything so far, but what, my question is related to, we started doing this once about fourteen or fifteen years ago.
Okay.
And actually had a dog that was going to be donated to the force.
Okay.
And they had, one of the officers was going to be its dedicated handler, but before it could be done, they found out they were expecting, and so he backed down from that, and so we gave it up because there was no officer willing to become that twenty-four-seven dog handler.
Yep.
I assume you talked to people on your force that you know somebody is willing to take that responsibility?
Yes, sir. And, and we'll have a selection process, you have only one person open for it, they still have to qualify, and they would still have to meet the vendor that we would buy the dog from, meet their requirements and training to be able to move forward with it, and it's, their job is to make sure that the right handler's with the dog, because you can get a phenomenal K-9 as the dog and a not very good handler, and that program is not going to do well. You, you need to have a really good handler as well, but we have more than one person in our department that would do, do an excellent job at that.
Okay, because like I said, we were all close to just putting the finishing touches on it, and then the officer backed out and...
I wasn't aware of that.
Nobody else was willing to, yeah, the dog was even going to be donated.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't think we'll come across that program this time.
What you're doing, Lance?
Uh, if approved tonight, we would ideally, I would like to have, um, the funding in place to try to purchase the dog this summer and start the training program.
So the, the money you're asking for annually would be added to next year's budget, is this going to be any amendment to this year's budget?
No amendment to this year's budget, no. And, and honestly, the, the fundraising could very well take to a point where we would be looking at maybe mid-year, mid fiscal year, like January one, before we looked at starting the, the program. So it might only be half of that that fits this year.
I would only add, if, if that does come in line, then we'll go as fast as that allows, and if, if you want to go with the original plan, worst-case scenario, to me, uh, I, I don't, I, I appreciate the approach here, thank you guys for your time. Matt, uh, Trace, even you.
I felt it was the, the proper approach, because I know how beneficial they are, but I don't want to bring something forward and push it without buying from the community and from, obviously, the council and city leadership. I want everybody to have their own opportunity to, and I, these guys will back me up, I told them, I said, "If you have something negative, say it." I want a well-rounded, I don't want everybody to come up here and just, like, having people, you know, the perception that I'm just trying to push this through. It's, I, I believe in that enough, but I believe we could pull anybody in the committee and that they would see the benefit of it. And one final thing I didn't add in my memo is it comes out to a write-around between $2.50 and $3 an hour to operate that dog on the street, which is a pretty good cost benefit, I believe, for the services that you'd be getting for it.
I want Nancy Pelosi to hear that. Um, you know, I, Ron hit the nail on the head, but, uh, the dogs are just truly, I know I can't say enough, phenomenal, the things they can do is amazing, um, like you said, down from tracking to evidence to whatever you want to do with them, but you know, when you're stopping people and they go through the work of wrapping their drugs in tape, pepper, wire tape, plastic, and then floating them in their gas tank, and you still get them with the dog, uh, it, it's just, I can't say enough, it's unbelievable. And for all the years I've been and all the other friends that I have that are K-9 officers, the only two people I ever heard complain were the ACLU and those in jail, so neither of those enjoy me much. It's a great thing, that's a great thing.
There's other questions, I want to thank the committee members, everybody, for their participation and for their work, they, they truly took it on themselves to research as well and not just take what we, what we gave them. So if there's other questions, all.
No, the good news is, and I don't know if you heard when Dave was talking, but the way he inferred it, and I just want to make sure Polk City Women is good with this, is that Polk City Women was going to donate forty grand.
If I'm talking to her, I think they would, if they could.
Okay, well, I was just listening, because, hey, just set up a lemonade stand full-time, all right? Because the way he said it was like, I just, it's on record, just to be clear.
I, I'd just like to add one more thing. I can think of instances of past where this would have been very fatal.
Yeah.
Having to go into the biggest building in town and look for a possible intruder.
Yeah.
Fortunately, and then we never found one over here, but in one of the other buildings there was one that wasn't found until later, and the dog would have went right to there, because there's a lot of crooks and crannies in that building.
We had two pursuits that came from Polk County that challenged us this summer, that one ditched the car and ran into our residential areas, and one wrecked their car and ran into residential areas, and both, we lost both suspects. And we were, it wasn't our pursuit, we didn't lose them, I'm not, I'm not saying that about Polk County, but if we would have had a K-9, we would have apprehended both of those people, I mean, within a matter of minutes, and then, Castle Mordini can back me up on that, I mean, it's, if you have a hot track like that come out of a car, then you have them in five minutes. I mean, it's, it's automatic, so. There's a lot, there'll go on all night about that, so I appreciate your guys' time, and again, thanks to everybody on the committee.
Yep, thank you.
So that's the first one, I would think. Sorry, I tried to walk away twice.
No, I just don't want to...
But, my... Is there any overlap for you? I just, when you were talking about the search, I went back to the, the Big Creek...
Yeah, actually, I was, I was, I didn't want to take any more time either, but I was saying, I can think of probably a handful, at least, fire department events where it would have been, would have been helpful, just in the last year, I can, I was just sitting here thinking about it. At least two or three off the top of my head, I can think of where it would have been a benefit to us for sure.
Life-saving benefit.
Absolutely, yep.
If you've ever seen a, a police K-9 tracked, it's, it's highly impressive, is that I would even say more impressive than they find, you know, drugs and gas in a car, the speed that they can move and, and locate someone, and I've heard different statistics all over. I helped, you know, went out of the Windsor Heights Police K-9 Committee, and I was on the committee, but I, I was charged with the dog, I was a patrol lieutenant once it was put into place, and I got all the material that they went through, and I, I want to say it replaces something like twenty-seven officers in an open-field search in the same amount of time. That's the speed.
So is there any, I mean, I know, PD handler, PD run, is there any FD impacts training that would make this even better, that, I mean, you're dispatched typically to the same calls, but...
Correct. It, it would, there would probably be some disfamiliarization as in what to do around the dog, um, just for safety, because the dog is put in prey drive to hunt for something, um, they are, they are aggressive at that point when the handler gives them that command, um, so you just don't want a firefighter or somebody close to the, not the dogs that ran, they attack people, but it's just a safety issue, it's a, one in a hundred times it could happen, uh, but if they called and needed us, we, the, the, the K-9 handler would come out with the dog and with a backup officer as well, and then they would advise, the fire department advised when they needed them, they would start doing their search, and we work with communications, probably bring a fire department member with us as communications, probably bring a firearm member with us as well, that trio to trail us and, and then search for a lost person.
Ground disturbance, something like that.
Yeah.
True story. You step on a piece of grass, it smells different than the grass that hasn't been stepped on.
And that's a whole other...
It's true.
If anybody's ever seen a bloodhound, they don't track like that. They don't track scent like that. They track disturbed ground, just broken grass, crushed leaves. It's, they, they move fast. It's an impressive thing to see.
Good job. Thanks to the committee. Thank you, everybody. Item B, consider most new endorsement and accept an ongoing canine program. Take your motion.
So moved.
We'll call.
Sergeant?
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Item A, Mr. Jeff Walters, Polk City Representative for DART. Cool update for us.
Trace? Will your dog track down buses? I think my officer, I think my officer's a handler.
On behalf of Polk City, I attended the ongoing transit funding study workshop number two, Wednesday, September 6th, 2017. This is part two of a three series workshop. A brief rundown of workshop number one here, a couple of bottom-up jokes. I'd say there was significant updates, but there really wasn't. We discussed different funding aspects, financial modeling, funding sources, and hopefully, here in a few weeks, when they wrap up this study, we'll have an answer. They're still looking at potential for property taxes, sales tax, increases to the cap. They talked about light vehicle registration and license taxes. But there's still no significant financial gap that's being truncated down to me that needs of DART right now. So, I mentioned it before, I think, the city of Polk City made the right choice in initiating the paperwork to opt-out DART. But I'm still optimistic between now and next year, when it's official, that maybe DART will have something in place where DART is economically liable, yet still a benefit to us here. So, 100% optimistic at this point.
When's the last meeting, refreshment?
Uh, the last meeting is October 3rd, next week.
Yep.
And that will be placed in front of the official commission in December.
Forward to hearing that final report?
Anyone have any questions or comments?
No, I just, again, appreciate you going. I know it's, we're kind of, maybe not necessarily at the head table by any means, but I know that it's nice that we're actually at the table. And I know there's others that are in the same position as us down there right now that are trying to figure out what the long-term plan is going to be.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a number of communities that have openly stated that they've opted out or are considering to opt-out. They're still at the table, though, because there is still an opportunity for this program to maybe be a benefit for the communities that are considering to opt-out. And I think it's, it's good to have representation there and not, not be there.
Exactly. I totally agree. Questions, comments for Jeff?
Just comment, again, I know I brought this up last time, but again, restate, I really appreciate him going to all these meetings. I know there's been several, and they're probably not the most exciting things he's ever done in a day. But it is necessary. There's no way we can be at all the meetings, and it's really good to have somebody present to bring that back to us. And that's a considerable amount of time out of the schedule, and it's truly appreciated. It's invaluable assistance.
Thanks, sir. Look forward to hearing that final report.
Thank you.
Can't wait to write for it.
Happy on the jet for the night. Item seven, mayor's report. It has been an interesting and busy couple of weeks. Let's just leave it at that. But I did want to comment to staff. I did see crosswalk lights up on Parker as well as Broadway tonight.
It's installed today.
Installed today. So I'm looking forward to seeing the kids using those up and around the school. They look nice. A new crosswalk up on Parker, a new crosswalk up, coming off King's Place, right? No, no, sorry, Oakwood.
Oakwood.
Oakwood, over there by the school. And so, and I have seen the school using that four-way pull-out every morning. Seems to be working well. Have you had any comments, feedback, anything from, seems traffic flow seems good up there?
I was a proponent of an actual light. And so, I wouldn't say I was an opponent of what we did, but it wasn't my first choice, but I'll admit when I was mistaken. It runs pretty smooth up there. I've been watching it in the mornings.
Pay attention up there around Parker and specifically that area with that new crosswalk that just went up there.
Yeah, we do a, we do a loop kind of down Broadway, up to Tyler, up Tyler, and then along where all the kids come on the backside of school, back to Parker to that corner. And we kind of make that loop when school's starting and ending, just so we can make sure that everybody's getting their vehicles and homes safely. So.
Interested to see the lights working up there. Nice work by everybody getting those done. And you weren't here two weeks ago, so I'll again, thank you publicly for you heading down to Texas on your own time. And the work that you did down there on your own time, again, and the positive message that you brought back. Thanks for everything you did. That's all I have. Mr. Anderson?
Just want to apologize for missing last week's PMZ meeting. But we've been very capable hands. I knew that they could handle us. Didn't have a lot to say that I could have added anyway, so I really appreciate the work with them there, and I'm sorry I missed. That's all I have.
Mr. Dorick?
I'd just like to state again, part with the parks committee, you know, the, excited to see the park improvements moving forward. First, first phase, if you will, to get that off the ground. And we've been talking about it for a long time, and now we're, we're executing. I know that the citizens will be very appreciative to see some of those areas starting to be developed, as they were probably promised when they purchased the areas. So excited to see that it's on the radar and that we're, we're looking at the phases now, the different opportunities. And also about the canine program, I think that's going to be a great addition. That's really all I have for the good calls.
Mr. Mordini?
I'd just like to bring up, I know Mike's gone, so I'll bring it up for his benefit. I sent both you and Gary and Mike pictures. Sometime ago, I brought up a 1210 Hanson as having issues with drainage that were never really addressed. I've got more emails and pictures tonight of ongoing flooding in their backyard, including the culvert being removed. About, she says five foot, I would say probably closer to eight foot wide swath of water back there. It seems to be, it's been several years. I mean, I think that's something that we really, really need to look at ASAP. Because I imagine there's probably other people there next door or two that are having the same issues.
Anything else? What's that? I haven't anything else?
No, and I didn't have his cell phone, or I would have sent it to him. I didn't really have the time that Mike was already on vacation, so sorry.
Mr. Sergeant?
A few things. Wasn't able to attend, but my wife and girls did go to the fundraiser this weekend for those two kids. And I was really neat to see some of the pictures and the money that was raised for those kids. So I think that's a really positive thing and good for this community to reach out to people who are struggling like that. Went to the Catch Des Moines Annual Report Outlast Tuesday, Monday. Nothing monumental really for us, but just good to be aware of all the things that are going on in the metro. And we certainly are buoyed by the, all the activity downtown and around the area. Love things in the hopper, as they always say, in their report out. But it's actually, you know, much fruition seemingly more now than, than in the past, so they're doing. So good things. And I also wanted to comment, so in our last MAC meeting, which has been a couple of weeks, it was the day after our last meeting. And if anyone's paying attention to other councils, there has been some action taken on fireworks, and there was a lot of discussion in that. I think it's prudent to do what we're doing, knowing that the time that this will come around again, the legislature will probably shift things again. And if they don't, we'll address it. And if we do, we'll address it. So not sure where that goes. But I, again, I think it, it doesn't make any sense to, to, to adjust anything now for next summer. But there are communities, Des Moines, West Des Moines, that are, that are taking that approach. And then finally, Amy, get your shushing finger ready for me. But I, I did, so the fire department was dispatched to a suspected arson.
Mm-hmm. Or, or confessed it. We're going to wait.
I asked her to get hers out.
We had talked ahead of time, I would have shushed you before we got to that. But I know where you're going.
Everything that we can be doing, we are doing, and nothing is changing or was sped up by that.
Everything is weird. Everything that needs to be done is being done.
Okay. I just don't want the perception out there that we're doing things because of that when we were doing things far prior to that. That's the message that I want to get out. As a former resident on Roosevelt, knowing, anyway, I can't get myself...
Mr. Lane?
Just a few things. One of the things, and it was several months ago, we had a joint session with PMZ, and we had people from the MTO come in and give a presentation on complete streets. And it's in our, what, the 20-year plan? I know it has a name.
Cop plan.
Our cop plan calls for a, a complete streets policy. I just was going to say that Des Moines has finished their first complete streets project. It's on East Grand. If you've been there lately, from about the Capitol down to about the river, they have the driving lanes and a parking lane, and then there's posts blocking off the bicycle lanes. So there's a protected bike lane, which is one of the key components of a complete street. So we just want to see what it looks like and be confused as much as I was the first time I drove through here. No doubt of it. I started out in the bike lane, don't tell anybody. Had to back up and go around.
You dropped out of your code?
No, I didn't. Anyway, that's one where you can go look at that. And then High Trestle Trail is being extended out to Perry. And there's already work to connect that to the Rattan River Trail system. So striking while the iron is hot, or iron is, iron is cooling off, we need to get this connected so we can get bikes coming through here and leaving money in town.
We just made a big step tonight.
I know. So, and the last thing, we really should count our blessings on those favorable bids we got. Metro Waste Authority had a bid out there, $54,000 concrete project for the transfer station, central transfer station in town. And they didn't receive a single bid. And they had contacted about eight firms that called, said that they were interested in doing it. But it was a somewhat of a complicated project, it had to be done in steps, but so they could still use it. But anyway, they didn't get a single bid. So, they're not as hungry as they used to be.
No. And that's it. Further council discussion? Mr. Hamon?
Thank you, Mayor. You swung my thunder on the Dash Creek Crosswalk. And it's probably best if you may do announce. But anyway, administrative staff has got our auditors in for the 16, 17 year. Things are going relatively smooth. The Lindsay's on point. Hopefully, we have a good report for the council.
Attorney's report? I'll add to the fireworks discussion that we are having regular conversations between us.
Right.
And I know we're going to be bringing something forward on the sale.
Specifically with the sale, because that's what we still have the moratorium on. We just want to make sure we have something in place come December.
But we took action through our previous, that we weren't allowing any discharging over New Year's, Christmas, that holiday. So we're clear until next year, and again, waiting until...
And the use, you've got something in place. It's just a sale that we need to...
And we're still covered based on all the other things that have been going on.
Exactly.
Engineers' reports? Public Works?
Well, I'd just like to thank the council for allowing the Public Works to get the part timers that we've had all summer. They've, I've had them kind of shifted on our sign inventory, which is about 85 to 90% done now. And that's replacing all the street signs with high intensity, getting rid of all the four-by-four posts with TEL-Spar. And they've been doing a really good job on that Ben and Thomas. And then they've also been accelerating our fire hydrant painting program. I think we have one more trailer getting blasted and painted right now. We'll have probably 70 hydrants done this year, in one year for paint. So they've been doing a great job.
Glad that's worked out well.
Yeah.
Technology? Finance? Fire Department?
Yeah, so it's been a quiet couple of weeks.
You're going to get shushed.
I'm going to get shushed. Actually, we responded, that was our third structured fire in a week, which is kind of odd. Two of them are not in town here, obviously. But so, lots of guys with, not a lot of seats. Really, the only thing I have is Fire Prevention Week is coming up. It is October 8th through the 14th. And so we'll be out kind of with all of our usual stuff. We'll be at the school, do daycare visits. The Citywide Fire Drill will be that Tuesday night. So we have, I think we're, daycare is on Monday, Citywide Fire Drill on Tuesday, school on Wednesday. And then on Saturday, the 7th, will be our open house and pancake breakfast that we traditionally do. The Fire Department all met last week. Typically, we do that pancake breakfast as a fundraiser for the association. And the department all met last week. We actually got with chief and talked to the police department. And so we're going to do that pancake breakfast together on that Saturday. And in lieu of raising funds for the Fire Department Association, we're going to do that together and make a donation to the two families in town with the kids that have cancer. So we'll be, hopefully, getting advertising out here pretty quickly. And so we're making adjustments to be able to handle, oh, we anticipate being a lot of people that will come, but we're pretty excited to do that. So that'll be on Saturday the 7th from 7 to 11.
Police Department?
That's enough tonight. Thank you.
You said it, not me. Library Department?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Public Works, who saved us last week when, not unlike the rest of us, our air conditioning decided that it should not be 90 degrees in September and went belly up. So it's much cooler in there this week than it was last. And then Monday of last week, we benefited Barnes and Noble out on University in West Des Moines, donated some really nice kids' bookshelves to us. So we're in the process of getting, figuring out how we're going to kind of reconfigure to get, to get those. That is going to bring some color and some fun things to our kids' area. And then on Thursday of last week, the library staff was in Marshalltown all day, and came out there. Basically, we were the librarians from Orlando State, planning the summer reading program for next year. And we've got five of our six presenters' books for next year. So we feel like we're, we're in a good place going into next year's summer reading program.
Nice work, nice work on the donation, too. Good job. I heard about that. Good job. Neighborhood Citizens Group? Oh, Ron?
I talked to Kim Morse this weekend. He's sorry, he hasn't been able to get up here anymore. His wife's in pretty poor health. Can't, excuse me. I was thinking about Ken Morse. Ken Thornton.
Okay.
And his wife's in pretty poor health, and he can't, he says he can't get away for that period of time.
Anything else out on your end? No? No, I'll take a motion on.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye.